That's okay, Brian.
Okay, it's six o'clock, so we're actually gonna open up the public hearing on the food truck ordinance. So, do we have anyone here that wants to speak? Okay, at this time, if we don't have anyone that wants to make comments about the food truck ordinance, we will call the meeting to order. Perfect timing. Okay, and calling me to order, we are going to open with a prayer. And we have Rick Peake here to open us in prayer.
That's great. Every father, we only thank you for this day you have given us. We thank you for your love that surrounds us and your grace and mercy that you have freely bestowed upon us. Thank you for these leaders that have chosen to take time from their responsibilities in life and their families and friends to serve the people of this town. I pray blessings on them, that you will give them wisdom, knowledge, fortitude, integrity for the decisions that need to be made for the betterment of this community. May your peace and God this place ever remain, in Jesus' name, amen.
Okay, now the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we do a round call please?
House Speaker.
Present.
Alvin Lender.
I'm here.
Alvin Lender.
Present.
Alvin Lender.
Here.
Alvin Proctor.
Here.
Alvin Riebel.
Here.
Okay, at this time, do I have a motion to approve last month's minutes? Okay, we have a motion.
I'll say it.
By Lance Riebel, the second, by Bill Lender. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? White sign, motion passes. Okay, next on the agenda, we have public comments. Do we have anyone present for public comments? Okay, moving along. Next, additions and deletions to the agenda. And I do have an addition to old business and would actually like to make it number one on the agenda. We have Brian Stone from Performance Services, just to give us an update on our project that we've been working with them for a while on. So he's here to do that, and I would like to make that number one. And then we'll move the food truck ordinance readings in number two.
I'd like to add something. The storm warnings, we used to have them on the phones, but a lot of people got croaked or something.
I think if they were contact Rocky, he can get them sent back.
Is that who you called?
Think. That's who done it in the past.
Okay, that's all, we don't need it on there?
Okay, I've been having a lot of people tell me I've been calling them to warn them, so I think it is, I think it is working. I think you just have to sign.
Yeah, I've heard several people said they got the warning from you.
Okay, alright.
I'd like to add the sign ordinance back and discuss it. I've had some comments on it. And we said we would in two months, and that's the timeframe.
Okay, so so far, what we had is adding Performance Services to number one on old business. We're gonna do the food truck ordinance as number two, and signs on number three.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, alright. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve agenda by Rex Dale, and a second by Lance Riebel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, white sign. Brian, you'd like to?
Thank you for having me. My name's Brian Stone. So for the last, I'm gonna say, year and a half, we've been, Performance Services has been working with Livingston on a operational efficiency project. It was passed last year by this board. I know some of you are not here, some of you are new additions, so the mayor asked me to come kinda give a brief overview of what that project was and kind of an update, if that's okay with you guys. So, what we worked on for the better part of a year and a half was how to make the city of Livingston more efficient and how to save money on the operation side. And it wasn't anything to do with personnel or anything like that. It was more along the operations of actual departments, along with utilities and the expenditures of the city. And so, what you see here in front of you is actually the scope list that was approved. There has been a delay, and I'll get to that in just a second, but I wanted to kinda go through that and give you some highlights on that. We did this through a three-step kinda step process. The first phase we did was preliminary, so we came and did a free, no-cost feasibility preliminary report, provided that to the city. The next phase was what we called an investment-grade audit, where we came and did all the engineering and development for each of these scope items. We bid each one of these out to local contractors, and then we act as the prime general contractor. We guarantee this return on investment. So the thing that's different about most projects is we actually have a financial guarantee on your return on investment of this project. So, to give you an idea, just a summary of each. LED lighting, so it's new lighting in all the buildings across, and if you actually slip, get through, there's actually detailed scope. So the next few pages are detailed scope items for what is actually included. The front page is just a summary. But it's in every building, new LED lighting in every building indoor and out. And that saves a good bit of money on the long-term energy. The building weatherization is new stripping siding, not siding, but new stripping and seals on doors and windows, the weather, you know, stripping for all the buildings. The maintenance desatification system, and if you have questions, I'm happy to answer specific ones. I just wanna make sure I get through, so I can get to the other stuff. It's actually a fan system, an exhaust system in the maintenance garage that allows the hot air to stay in and the cool air to get out, because there is no air conditioning in that garage. And so it allows for a little more airflow for the comfort of the staff in that building. Building controls, I believe it's in four of the buildings here, but it's new building automation. So it's new thermostat, it's new building controls to help better regulate temperature, heat and cold throughout the year. The last few, four, are kind of the big items. Waste water treatment plant variable frequency drives. And so, if anybody's familiar with that, it's essentially a piece of equipment that goes on your pumps and motors and regulates how hard it's working. So it judges how much water and how much energy it needs to do, and it ramps it down, or sets a piece of equipment down or ramps it back up, depending on the need of the equipment. That is an actual, a real cost savings on the energy side. So it doesn't allow, doesn't force you to run your equipment all out at all times. Sewer plant has the same thing, so we went, we're gonna install the same variable frequency drives on the pumps and motors at the sewer plant. The one thing that's different is for moving with the SCADA system. The SCADA system is like a control system for your wastewater treatment plant. You do not have one currently. And so, you have one at the water plant, but you do not have one at the wastewater plant. What that does is it allows you to automate some of your processes, so it takes less, more burden off of your staff at that site, and allows, gives you actually protection in the future in case something were to happen where you do not have personnel at the sewer plant. And so it actually gives you a control system to better regulate your processes or automate those processes that are done right now by hand. Next is remote water pipe leak detection. So, we actually do, this is two parts. We've gone, come out here twice. So, our company, we have a special drone that has a thermal imaging camera, and so we can actually fly water lines. So we can fly about 12 miles of water line and sewer line a day, and it goes above the ground and it looks for different temperatures. So it can read, has a thermal camera that looks down on where the pipe is underground. So we take all the plants, we fly over those pipes, and we can identify leaks. So if there's a leak that's even below ground, we can see the difference in temperature by that camera. So we identified 12, those have been notified and done. We came back out again and did it. What we did was we focused on the three main zones in your distribution system that have the most unaccounted water loss. So we look at it and said, how do we decrease your unaccounted water loss, which helps you increase your revenue, obviously decrease your costs. The other piece of that is called acoustic leak detection. And so, it's a piece of equipment that if you put down in one manhole, and you put it down, call it 200 feet or 200 yards in another, it'll actually send an acoustic signal down, and it'll tell you if there's a leak in that pipe. So it's a better way, not only do you do get the, you have zone meters on your distribution system now, this allows you to actually narrow down and find exactly where your leaks are. That part of the system, that part of the scope, we come out and do it once with you guys. So once that equipment comes in, we come out and actually go through that process, find the zones, and go do some of those readings, and then we turn that equipment over to you and train your staff. So this is a long-term solution for leak detection that we included in there. So it's only a sort of thing that we do, but we give you the equipment. The big piece of this is a solar system, solar uptake, it's a photovoltaic system at the raw water intake. Your raw water intake is the single biggest energy user and consumer in the entire town. And so, there's that piece of property, if you, there's a very thin out to the raw water intake. There's a, there's a piece of property right along the river that sits next to the raw water intake. We were gonna put solar panels there, and it actually reduces the energy use of that building by about 40%. That building is so massive from the energy consumption, that's as much as we can offset. So we're not completely taking that, that raw water intake off the grid. We're just simply saying those solar panels are gonna supplement, supply about 40% of the power that it uses. The benefit of that is, and under the Inflation Reduction Act, right now it is still in place, you actually get 30% of that cost back. So when you put that system in, there's this process that we go through that you get a check back from the federal government for 30% of the cost. And so we built that in. The other piece that's in here, it is run by the internal revenue system that brought that refund. And so we actually included about $75,000 for a tax consultant and tax attorney to help Philis or whoever go through the process of applying for it and getting those funds. So we did as much as we can to take the burden off of city staff and reduce the cost. So all of that is built into the system, it's built into the cost. What we've done since then, so we've kinda waited, we've had to wait on both auditors and comptrollers office before we can get started. Right now, so we've been, maybe seven months, we're about seven months in, we're holding our pricing. So, this board, two of your predecessors, approved the contract to go do this. Right now, we're holding our pricing. I think you would be, it would be hard to find any other contractor willing to hold pricing for seven months. We are willing to do so, as long as we can kinda get started as soon as we can, as soon as possible. As soon as comptroller or auditors tell us that everything is good, we're ready to go. But I'm happy to answer any questions. Mayor, if you have specific things you want me to address, I'm willing to have you to go into further detail.
And I mainly wanted to bring him here just for an update, since it had been a while, and we have a couple of new members, just to see if there were any specific questions or...
I'll add one more thing. The Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund was working with us on the financing for this project. So while we're holding our pricing, we built into our cash flows and all this a pretty healthy interest rate for the city. You should see a pretty significant savings on interest since it's been a couple of months. So we should see a pretty good savings on the interest rate once this actually goes.
Was it the cost of the product that might have been seen?
Sure, so and I do apologize, there were two different, I didn't realize that I put two. It's the four point, the, on the cover, they have a 4.857, and then you get a little over a million.
Million dollars, 4.807 million dollars.
So you give about a little over a million of that back. This project fully pays for itself, so there's no money that comes out of the city budget. We're simply creating savings for, reducing your operating costs to pay for this. So there's no strain on the budget whatsoever, and actually, in the first year, you have a positive cash flow of $14,000. So you actually make money, you actually keep more money in your budget by doing this project.
How long do the solar panels last?
So they're warranty for 25 years, so we're responsible for the, actually, we're responsible for the warranty for 25 years. We see that what they usually last in between 30 and 32 years is what we're, we're estimating.
I can't remember in the contract where it's a guaranteed savings.
So we, we have a financial guarantee. So every year, we go through a process that's called measurement and verification. So we look at your actual utility bills, we look at your budget, we look at your audit and financials, and if we have, if there's a shortfall in the actual return on investment, so you see those year-one savings, the operational savings, we are responsible for the shortfall. So if it comes up short in any way, we have, we actually write a check to you for the difference. So we actually put our money where our mouth is and guarantee that you're gonna have the $14,705 in just the first year positive cash flow.
So, you're benefiting this one?
I mean, we're not, it's not free for us, I mean, we do make money. We're a for-profit company, so there is a, there is profit in this, in this, but it's a...
And where is the profit?
It's in the contract, so we actually detailed. It's not something that I'm quite willing to share publicly, but it is in the contract, and I'm willing to have it.
Can you share it publicly?
You can, I'm, to be honest, it's in the contract. But it's all, it's normal construction, I will tell you this, in line with normal construction industry overhead and profit.
Any other questions?
When is it really gonna take hold? The projects, are they all done? Are they all started?
So we're, we're under contract, we have to, the way the process goes is the comptroller, the state comptroller actually has to approve the city to take out debt. And so, I know there were some things that prevented the comptroller from the audit and budget perspective from last year that prevented the comptroller from approving it. We're simply waiting on the auditors to finalize. Last year, if I'm speaking properly, mayor, please stop me if I'm not, but finish last year's audit so that the comptroller can approve the debt.
So the engineering and design portion has been done, and you guys are ready to go?
We're ready to go.
Whenever that happens, so...
So, we've already signed several subcontract, we've held off on quite a bit, just because, you know, we kind of wait for the comptroller to give approval. There's some stuff that we couldn't wait on, but we've waited on most everything else.
If there are no more questions, this does not require a vote, I just felt like it had been a while, and that you needed to come and just give us an update on where you was and where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, next on the agenda is the second reading to the food truck ordinance. And this is the zoning ordinance, and this went before the planning commission last week. We actually did bring it up prior, prior to that, but this is gonna be our second reading. And there's just one change that is made. Whereas the town of Livingston has adopted a municipal ordinance regulating permitted uses within the town's central business district, within the C2 commercial zoning district. And whereas the town council has determined it is in the best interest of the town to amend the municipal zoning ordinance regulating permitted uses within the town's central business district, within the C2 commercial zoning district to permit food trucks in the central business district. And whereas the mayor and board of aldermen of the town of Livingston, acting as the town council, desire to amend the municipal zoning ordinance regulating permitted uses within the town's central business district, within the C2 commercial zoning district. Now therefore, the mayor and board of aldermen of the town of Livingston hereby ordain that section 11, 208 dash 2 dash 10 of the Livingston Municipal Zoning Ordinance is hereby amended as follows. Uses permitted food trucks and mobile food vendors. This ordinance shall be effective, effective upon its final passage, the welfare of the town requiring it. And basically, what we did in this was we took out the restriction on the days of the week. So, do I have a motion to pass this?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion made by...
Just clarification that we can have food trucks in the city of Livingston? Pretty much.
Any day of the week. This particular ordinance is specifically for
The...
the C2 commercial zoning district.
Okay.
So, that was something that was already written into this ordinance, and a motion was not made to change the locations only the days of the week. So...
The C2 central business district, is that more or less up and down the main street, around the bypass? Or is this just a perimeter of the square?
It's, this, this particular ordinance is just the perimeter of the square. And I, I...
When you change that?
Yeah, I don't like that.
So, that was the ordinance that was passed a while back, and so when we changed just the days of the week, I think we did not specify to open it up to other areas, and so...
Reason I asked this, I mean, I got some calls on it. I mean, we just had a food truck come here by ASB Bank
Right, yeah.
and other places, so if we pass this ordinance or whatever, they couldn't sit up down there, could they?
Nope.
That is correct until we make some changes.
Until we make a change.
Okay.
Ready to make a change? Let's make a change.
Well, currently, we, we have to pass this one to pass the days of the week, and then, and then make the change. So, I had a motion by Alderman Lender, did I have a second?
I'll have to say it.
Okay, okay, I have a second by Alderman Proctor. Okay, any discussion on this right now? I think we've had that discussion. So, all in favor of passing, opening up to every day of the week on this ordinance? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, now are y'all wanting to make another motion?
To extend it to the city? And come right up, right up, but, you know, we had one behind our pool bank today, where Lee Proctor allowed somebody in his...
It, it...
So basically, you guys are wanting to open it up to all commercial districts, industrial districts, and then no residential except for the city ballpark, which we could just word it as all C, C and I districts prohibited in R1 and R2 if it is not public property. City property.
Sounds a bit legal, I don't know.
I mean, as long as we can go west side, east side, bypass, church.
Well, that would cover, that would cover everybody, that would be in those zones.
Yep, I never left.
So, do, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Lender, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. A second, a second by Alderman Elder. Any further discussion on that?
Alderman, is that where you're gonna work?
That'll work just fine.
Okay.
What about if it's on private land?
The way that we, we word that not residential. If it's privately owned, commercial, industrial, or the city ballpark is actually residential, and so since that's city property, if we just exclude it, if it's not permitted in R1, R2, unless it's city-owned, then we can...
Do we own the farm market over here? Does the city own that?
We do, we do.
Alright, because they want one, that's the only reason I'm asking. They came to me and said they would like to have one on their area.
Okay, and we did have that listed in our permitted areas? Okay, alright.
Now, this is not gonna bother our children's lemonade stands and stuff like that, then, in their presence, is it?
I don't have an answer for that, but I would...
If he does, we're gonna have to kick some butt.
But I, but I, I would think not.
I may have said some far-off stuff, but I couldn't, didn't see anyone, you know. First of all, don't you lie, you may be the one saying.
I love this lady.
Okay.
I'm a lemonade specialist.
Any, I am too. Any other, any other discussion about this? Okay. So, is everybody clear? Do I need to repeat what we're, what we're writing? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, white sign, motion passes.
It needs to go before the planning commission, but I don't need to go on that, it just has to, it has to happen.
Okay, very nice. Okay. Okay. So, we have put signs back on the agenda, so I need someone to make a motion.
Some discussion, I think is what it is.
Yeah, we already discussed much.
Okay. Oh yeah, we already made a motion, discussion on signs, sorry. Keep them straight.
Do you want to?
I said, I said, keep them straight.
Have you ever made a motion in time ago?
Okay. We told the city would bring it back up in a couple of months, and it has been. I've had several people approach me over the last couple of months, and their feelings is to leave the sign ordinance as is, because they don't want it to clutter up the town, the bypass with billboards.
Billboards is okay. Right? We were discussing that.
Well, you know, far as these, far as the other signs, auction signs, they want to prove they've done all right for the last two months.
Well, my, my opinion is, this is pretty crucial to their business, and it just, it shows them where they're having an auction. And it, it's not excessive, it's not... I don't know, I, I just don't think it's a bad thing. It's, it shows people where these things gonna be happening, where these events gonna be occurring, and it, it gets them more money for their product. And it, I don't know, I, I just have a hard time thinking that would be a bad thing to have an auction sign up for 30 days and then they come back down. And if somebody had a problem with them, the owners would come pick up. I may need a minority.
Need a motion? I'll make the motion to leave the ordinance as is.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
So, we have a motion, um, by Alderman Linder to, uh, for the sign ordinances to remain as is and a second by Alderman Proctor. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, let's take a vote.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Alderman Elder?
Which one I owe here, uh?
To leave the sign ordinance as is.
No.
Alderman Mayford?
No.
Alderman Linder?
Yes.
Alderman Proctor?
Yes.
Alderman Riddle?
Yes.
Austin Hader?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We stacked it on stage.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda, we're down to new business and we have, um, Jim Gant from Downtown Revitalization.
All righty, I've got, so, quite a few updates tonight. Uh, I passed those out to you, so I won't read them all, uh, all the way through. Those very first one, um, the T-Dot multimodal access grant for Broad Street and Main Street sidewalk. Uh, all the documents have been submitted, um, and we're just waiting for approval. And that was the last step, so we should receive a notice to proceed with bidding here pretty soon. The next one on the list was the Courthouse Plaza. Uh, bids are being taken now until April sixteenth at one thirty. And then, subject to T-Dot's recurrence, we will bring a contract for construction, uh, here to the board meeting in May. So, hopefully, construction will start arriving for that. The next one is the Alternative Program Cedar and Little Streets. We didn't get any responses for our requests for statements or qualifications on the, uh, T-Dot website. And as a result, uh, T-Dot's allowing the city to select, to solicit, uh, requests directly from engineering firms. And we're gonna send those out to three or four firms this week. And hope to have a recommendation by May, but that might roll over to the June meeting. The traffic modernization program, the signals around the square and various places. Uh, this will occur, we were told, the last of twenty twenty-five or early twenty twenty-six, so it's nothing, anything running away. T-Dot resurfacing, uh, as you've seen, there are signs up that says paving will start soon. Uh, that was something that sort of came out of the blue. Um, Rogers Group will be performing the resurfacing. And that includes replacement of the stamped crosswalks, uh, on the square. Uh, and they'll start in about two weeks on that. Uh, I'm told there, there may be some disruption in traffic signals during that time until the loops are repaired. Then the last thing on that list is out of my jurisdiction, but it's on the site development grant at the industrial park. Uh, the city submitted its application on March twenty-seventh. And we're waiting on the invitation to make an in-person presentation in Nashville for a week in June. And the project total, project cost is six hundred fifty-eight thousand, two hundred, two hun- two hundred sixty-eight with, uh, the grant covering ninety percent of that cost. And I have no answers, but any questions on that particular one for sure? Any questions on any others? Next page is Central Park Activities, we've got quite a, quite a lot going on this year. Uh, May thirty-first is our first concert in the park, Central Park. We'll have World Turning Band, which is a Fleetwood Mac, uh, tribute band. And then the Seven Bridges, which is an Eagles tribute band. So, both of those should be pretty popular. Uh, June sixth and seventh Pioneer Days will be held, uh, in the park this year because we do, uh, have the opinion or coming to construction. So, um, we started moving last year, but the construction didn't come, but this year, we're gonna move it for sure. So, that will be the sixth and seventh of June. And then, we're very excited about the next two, August the second, we have the Garrett Boys, which is a local group. And we have Baker Blankenship, who is a young star that has risen rapidly from here to Tennessee and, and from here in Livingston. Uh, we had Baker on stage at Pioneer Day last year. Uh, he played a little while, and this year, we couldn't afford him for Pioneer Day, but we do have him for the concert. Then August the ninth, the next weekend, these two are pretty close together, but, uh, the, the people that we booked were, were scheduled already, so we had to go with these dates. The Summer Fest will be August the ninth, so we'll have four on the floor. And then we'll have the Jake Hoot Band as well. Uh, the August second and August ninth will be ticketed events. And they'll go on sale, tickets will go on sale hopefully around the April fifteenth. Any questions about that?
I'm just excited.
Big lineup, yeah? I don't know if y'all follow Baker or not, but he got a gold record in the last couple of weeks. Um, and he's touring over in Europe, or was last week, I don't know if he's back there or not, but he's taking off like a rocket. Thank you.
Thanks, Gene. Okay, and then next on the agenda, we have our new Chamber of Commerce Director, Zach Stevens.
Geez, a little too, uh, well, not as small as I am, I'll say it nicely. How do y'all, I think, uh, the majority of you know me. If not, I'm Zach Stevens, I'm the new president and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, I've reached out to the majority of you and, uh, if I haven't had the chance to talk to you on the phone, I hope I can speak to you after the meeting. I've been asking, uh, most of you to, uh, stew on a question. Uh, and that is, um, well, I've been, been posing it this way. I'm sure there's things that we've done great at the chamber and I want to hear those because we want to keep on doing that. And I'm sure there's things that we can improve on, and I also want to hear that. And, uh, I just also want to say, I hope, uh, or I look forward to a, uh, good partnership with the city. Uh, I very much enjoyed working with, uh, Mayor Burnett and, uh, I look forward to working with you all. And if y'all have any questions, I'm here.
He's got about two hours for questions, guys.
Yeah, no, I, I will begin a, a two-hour, uh, disc talk, I'll start reading from the phone book. No questions, comments, concerns? Good night.
Welcome.
Zach, welcome, welcome, welcome to the chamber. Thanks for, uh, giving us an update and we'll see you frequently. Okay, and, uh, last item on the agenda are bids on the paving of Billbury Street, which I'm sure a lot of people are excited to hear about, including me. So, um, there was, we did a bid, uh, for the paving job and so we have a resolution, um, to award the bid for, for the Billbury Street paving. Um, we did, the town of Livingston received competitive bids, um, and we opened them on March fourteenth. And we had two bid amounts, one from Copeland D R P, um, LLC in the amount of twenty-six thousand, six hundred and forty, and then from Rogers Group of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred. So, um, we reviewed the bids and determined to award the project to, uh, Copeland, uh, D R P, uh, which was the, um, best bid and it happened to be the lowest as well. So, do I have a motion on the table to accept, um, Copeland D R P's bid, uh, for the paving job for Billbury Street?
I like the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Elder, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, second by Alderman Linder. Uh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Okay. Is there any other business? Oh gosh, I forgot to read this one off. I was thinking, maybe you would, but I'll, I'll read this, I forgot about that. Um, we do have one more thing that was, uh, part of our downtown revitalization. Um, so, we have decided for just purposes of being a part of, uh, the Main Street program, uh, as well for the Downtown Revitalization Committee, which is, uh, the committee that was formed when we get our additional downtown grant money. Um, it was named Downtown Revitalization Committee and, uh, we would like to rename it. So, I'll read, uh, the resolution in short. Whereas the town of Livingston is duly organized and appointed members to that certain public body presently known as the Downtown Revitalization Committee. And whereas for reasons satisfactory to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, the town of Livingston desires to rename the Downtown Revitalization Committee. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Mayor and Alderman of the town of Livingston. The town of Livingston Board of Mayor and Alderman, acting as town council, hereby renames the Downtown Revitalization Committee, which shall hereafter be referred to as the Main Street Historic District Commission. The Main Street Historic District Commission shall continue to exist with its current membership and operate with and according to all the rights, privileges, duties, and obligations vested in it by the town of Livingston as originally established. The resolution shall become effective upon its passage, the welfare of the town requiring it. So, do I have a motion to, um, accept this name change of the Downtown Revitalization Committee?
So.
Okay, uh, Alderman Dell made a motion?
Second.
And a second, uh, Alderman Proctor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, any other business?
Got one question for what, did you ever get a chance to check on the helicopter insurance?
Yeah, we have, we have reached out about the air evac insurance, but we're waiting on some other documentation, um, so that's why we did not put it on the agenda. Okay?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Adjourn.
So, Gene, you didn't have to change the name, like, come in and just put out our label.